Well, good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming to the, I'd like to call to order, the Bristol, Virginia City Council Meeting. Today is Monday, January 13th, 2025. Start off by having a moment of silent prayer. Please join me in standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, good evening, everyone. It's nice to see a good crowd here tonight on this cold night. I wanted to start out with just a few comments. And one, I'd just like to extend a heartfelt thank you to our dedicated city staff who worked tirelessly to keep our roads clear during the recent snowstorm. I went out several times and was amazed at how quickly and fast they were working in our community. So, we appreciate their hard work and commitment to keep our community safe and it doesn't go unnoticed. So, thank you again to all of them. Secondly, on January 20th, it's Martin Luther King Day, and Bristol will be having our celebration for that. At 1:30, our community will gather for a march at the YWCA. And then at 1:45 on that same Monday, January 20th, there will be songs and a march to the Bristol sign. And then there's a whole list of other events you can find. I put it on my mayor Facebook page, but then there's other pages out there that it's posted of a host of events that are going Thursday and Friday, and then Saturday. And then Sunday, there's also a ceremony going to be held at the Lee Street Baptist Church at 3:00 PM. So, we'd like to invite you out to attend that. And then last, I would just like to take a moment to express my sincere gratitude to this council for unanimously electing me to be mayor again this year. It's an honor and privilege to serve, and I'm excited to continue working together to keep our city on a strong and forward-moving path throughout 2025. So, thank you all. And I'll open the floor for any other council comments.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to reiterate what you said about city staff over the weekend and over the last couple of weeks with the snow. They've done a fantastic job keeping the roads clear. Oftentimes, having to scrape the same road multiple times, just the snow kept coming, but they kept working through the night and through the days. And then also our first responders, the rest of us, I stayed home over the weekend due to the weather. First responders are out working, working hard. So, just all our folks have done a great job, and just all our city staff in general. Just want to thank them again for the service they do to our city, service they do for our city, for our citizens, and just what they mean to this community. So, thank you.
One thing we may not always realize, a lot of those people who are running the snowplows, that's a second job for them. A lot of them are running the trash trucks other days, and then when they have to also run snowplows all weekend, that's a lot of work for them. So, I'm especially grateful for everything they do to keep us safe and keep the streets clear.
All right. We'll move into city manager's comments.
My counsel, I just want to reiterate what you all have said about our public works staff. You may or may not know, but there's over 200 and some odd miles of roads within the city that our staff has to clean and take care of when it snows. And they were out all afternoon Friday, all night Friday night, and all day Saturday to clean those roads and make sure that they were passable. So, they did an excellent job. I was out early Saturday morning, and for the most part, those roads by early Saturday morning were clear and passable. Some of the subdivisions still had work to do, but I think they got that cleared up throughout the day on Saturday. There's a lot of work that they put in to get those things done, and it's just really impressive what they can do with the tools that they have.
All right. Thank you. Looking for adoption of the agenda.
I move for the adoption of the agenda as presented.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Clerk, please call the roll.
Barnum?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Pollard?
Yes.
Nave?
Yes. All right. Moving into the first item on the agenda, regular agenda, supplemental appropriation of $46,067. Staff report, Ms. Bradlin.
Thank you, Mayor Nave and members of council. This agenda item is a supplemental appropriation in the amount of $46,067. All general fund appropriations for the police department to appropriate the proceeds of items sold for operating supplies and materials, $3,732. To appropriate recovered costs received for overtime expenditures in the amount of $2,010. To appropriate monies donated to the police department to be expended on equipment in the amount of $10,000. To appropriate insurance proceeds received to be expended on repairs in the amount of For the fire department to appropriate monies donated to the department to be expended on equipment in the amount of $10,000. City sheriff to appropriate monies donated to that department to be expended on operating supplies and materials, $10,000. And the city sheriff grants department appropriate monies donated to the department to be expended on shop with a hero expenditures in the amount of $1,000. Staff does recommend that council approve the supplemental appropriation as listed. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Looking for a motion and second.
I move for approval of the supplemental appropriation as presented.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Is there any council discussion?
I just want to say thank you to the United Company Foundation for their two very gracious gifts, one to the police department, one to the fire department. They don't have to do that. They don't have to support our firefighters and police officers that way, but they do. And it's a very gracious gift, so thank you.
So true. All right. With no further discussion, clerk, please call the roll.
Barnum?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Pollard?
Yes.
Nave?
Yes. All right. Moving into item number two, public hearing for ZMA 03-2024, tax map partial 308-2-1. I will now open the public hearing. And let me see, and no one has signed up for public comment, and we'll look for a staff report from Jay.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of council. So, as presented before, and it's come back to you for the public hearing, we have received a request for rezoning, a zoning map amendment for parcel 308-2-4, commonly referred to as the white site at the intersection of Bonham Road and Old Airport Road. Property is owned by Falls Acquisitions LLC. You see sight pictures of it. This is, of course, the property that was used for years and years for soccer fields and youth football and things like that when the city did own it. The property is currently zoned M2C with conditions, that's manufacturing with certain conditions placed on it, and the request is to rezone it to the flexible redevelopment district. The conditions on the property also go with some restrictive covenants on the property. They mirror each other. I'll just get into that briefly here in a few minutes. So, it does limit development to light industrial, wholesale, or public facilities. And if the property were rezoned to the flexible redevelopment district, the FRD is kind of a mix of some commercial uses, you could put residential in those, or you could do some light industrial, similar to what those deed covenants permit. As mentioned, the property right now, M2Cs, you can see where the star is, property directly to the north, the old Boise and Office Max property was just rezoned to this FRD designation a few months ago. Oh, so we'll just go back. The existing land use for this is a vacant lot. Existing zoning designation, as mentioned, is M2C, general industrial with conditions. The future land use map designation from the new comprehensive plan is light commercial. The site is approximately 10.6 acres. As far as I know, it's been vacant, historical land use, and you can see the location of the property. Section 50-17 of the city code and section 152, 2283, 2284, and 2285 of the Code of Virginia as amended allow for a process, excuse me, to amend the zoning ordinance, including zoning map amendments. And I won't read all those, they're there in your memo. There's a mix of residential, public, semi-public, office, and manufacturing uses in this area. So, you have the Lynnwood Hills neighborhood adjoining, you have a mobile home park that's also adjoining across the street, and then you have just the industrial park uses there, VDOT, UPS, those uses, and then whatever the property to the north where the old Boise will be. As mentioned before, FRD is one of our new zoning districts. It allows us to give more flexibility for potential mixed-use type districts, and it can allow, you know, some single-family, multifamily residential, office and business uses, not quite with the density as you'd see in a B3 district. And then you have some light industrial, maybe a little less than you'd get in an M1, but just some uses here and there. There are also some other uses permitted by special use permit. Just to go in a little deeper with the conditions that are on the property. So, the property has had this conditional zoning designation since 1988, and it was done to lessen the impact of a manufacturing zone on the residential property that adjoins it. So, when the industrial park was created, most of it was heavy industrial. This particular section of it was M2. They put some conditions on it, so next door to the residential, you could have a little bit of a buffer zone. Just to go over what these are, so the conditions and the deed covenants are exact, you know, they're the exact same thing. Establishments for the manufacture, processing, assembly, and distribution of products in the office buildings or corporate headquarters related. Establishments for scientific research and development. Establishments primarily for the wholesale distribution of goods, products, and materials. Heliports and public utility facilities for the use of occupants of the industrial park, industrial facilities, and public uses necessary to serve the property. So, the restrictions prohibit heavy industry that might involve odor, dust, noise, and other environmental impacts, and I do believe I have attached those conditional zoning to your packet. However, the permitted uses still do contain the term industrial facilities, and that would allow manufacturing and distribution facilities that could still generate truck traffic in the surrounding highway. These restrictive deed covenants that are on the property are separate from the zoning. So, even if the property is rezoned, amending these covenants or removing these covenants will still require approval by the Industrial Development Authority and a minimum of 66% of the current owners of properties in the Bristol industrial park. So, for any development to occur here, other than what's already in there, it'll have that two-step process. We'll have this rezoning, and then the property owners would have to request those covenants be amended or changed, just like the previous rezoning applicants did. As you can see, we did get some staff comments. I'll just highlight the ones, the big ones. So, from a local traffic standpoint, our city engineer commented that from an engineering traffic perspective, based on current VDOT and city traffic studies, as well as potential upcoming smart-scale projects, the city will require a traffic impact analysis with the site plan regardless of the zoning or proposed use. We do have a smart-scale project into VDOT for this intersection that could help flow through here, traffic flow through here a little better. We'll find out May, June, whether or not we get this funding, and it could be a few years before it's even available after that. But we won't know anything on it yet until May or June. Depending on proposed use, the traffic could impact the Virginia primary school and Virginia intermediate schools. That's something that traffic impact analysis would speak to. Comment from Eric Blevins, our fire marshal, are that hydrants are present and BVU projected flows would be acceptable for this change. BVU commented, and they referenced the development, the release and settlement agreement between BVU and the city of Bristol, and I've attached that. This is really only relevant if there is a residential, multifamily residential development of less than 150 units. So, if that's not what goes into this property, then that doesn't really apply. Transit does serve this property with our East Bristol route, and so it could be impacted, but it is one of our lower-performing routes. So, I don't think it would be a significant hardship for the transit system in this area. We did receive a comment from Mac Chapman, our economic development director, who said that he would not recommend a rezoning without knowing the intended end use. Bristol, Virginia is limited in land availability, and this property is arguably the best available land for industrial in the city. The previous rezoning in the area was approved while working on covenant amendments in order to allow a new use in line with those covenants. Rezoning this property at this time would not make a lot of sense because the end use will still need to be in line with the restrictive covenants. It may also be important to note that the applicant has been notified about the covenants and has not reached out to me or IDA to discuss any amendments. There has been some talks since this comment came, and I'll address that during the first ordinance reading section of the agenda. And we did have a joint public hearing with the planning commission in December. We had two property owners, adjoining property owners speak out, Mr. Jeff Bryan and Ben Doughty. Neither one of them were in support of the rezoning request. And that's all I have. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. I will now close the public hearing, and we will move to the next item on the agenda. Request for a variance from city code 50-582, off-street parking requirements. And looking to you again for another staff report, Jay.
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. Staff has received a request for a parking variance from section 50-582 of the city code. The applicant is the Bristol Redevelopment and Housing Authority, and the location and project is Goodson Hills, which is located on Mary Street between Moore Street and Oakview This is not the property zoning, apologize. This is just the area of the future development. As you can see, highlighted in black, next to the former Central Baptist Church, don't remember what the church is now, but you know what I'm talking about there at the corner of Moore and Mary. And then all the other surrounding property on their side is already owned by the Bristol Redevelopment Housing Authority. So, they have a lot of property in this area. It's a little difficult to see, but this is the proposed site plan for the upcoming development. There would be 23 townhouse-style residential units that'd be constructed here, very similar to what they've been doing along Oakview Avenue. So, you know, they look a little more modern. The code, when it comes to parking, requires two unit, or two parking spaces per residential unit. So, for 23, you would need 46 parking spaces. Currently, the site plan, because of the size of the lot, they only have room for 33 parking spaces. So, that would leave them 13 parking spaces short. In your packet, there is a letter from Mr. Rich Pennell, who is here tonight in case you do have some specific questions. And it's pretty straightforward in the request. The city was going to allow some off-street, the parking lot right next to them, them to use 13 of those parking spaces that are underutilized towards their 46 requirement. Unfortunately, their primary lender, Virginia Housing, doesn't, isn't quite as gracious about doing that. You know, they have some issues just in case there were some ownership transfers, anything like that in the future. So, unfortunately, now they cannot use these 13 spaces towards that. Or they could, but the process might take up to a year. Their application is due this week, so this is why they made this variance request. You know, as you read this letter, it can also, you know, talks about how these 13 spaces that we were going to be able to include are still there and are still available. We just can't officially include them in this site plan approval. Some of these parking spaces are actually a little closer to the development than the parking spaces on the development, and this is affordable housing for people with minimal resources. Mr. Pennell states that our residents typically have either one or no vehicles at all, and it is highly unlikely that any of our residents would have two vehicles. When I received the request, I did send it out to staff, that's why I don't have a recommendation yet. Came in right at the deadline, so I wanted to make sure nobody had any issues that I wasn't, you know, an expert in. I did receive one comment from Jake Chandler, Public Works Director. He did say this, "I'm not opposed to the parking variance. Maybe one item, though, that should be noted is that while there is on-street parking on the north side of Mary Street, that is not guaranteed continued use of the street. While there are no plans currently to remove parking from this section of Mary Street, there could be in the future, as the city works to bring sidewalks up to current ADA standards. Note that this section of Mary Street may lose the on-street parking in the future in order to bring these sidewalks up to the standards, particularly regarding the width of the sidewalk." While the off-street parking, or the on-street parking is not something we look at, I just wanted to make sure, and we wanted to make sure as a staff, that both council and the housing authority knew, this could come up in the future. If we decide to widen those sidewalks, that parking could go away. But based on the letter and the request that Mr. Pennell sent from the housing authority and the fact that we did not receive any other negative comments from staff, staff does recommend that council approve the parking variance in accordance with 50-582C.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Dietrich. And I don't know if Mr. Pennell, if you would like to add anything to that? I'll give you that opportunity if you'd like to. No worries if not.
Thank you. No, I have nothing to add. I just, if there's any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
All right. All right. Thank you. All right. Before we get into discussion, looking for a council motion and second.
I move for approval of the variance request as presented.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Council discussion.
Well, first I'll say thank you to Mr. Pennell and Ms. Porter from the housing authority for being here. And, you know, I think that this is a, the project overall, I think, is very good. This is a spot, correct me if I'm wrong, where there had been older public housing that had been torn down several years ago. So, you know, obviously, A, we're not adding necessarily to the housing stock that we have, but we are replacing what's been there previously. And as you can see with the affordable housing, the villages at Oakview, it's a different style. It looks really nice. It improves the face of the neighborhood. So, I think that this is, I think this is a good project, and if this is something that we can do to help move that along and get it approved and get the ball rolling, I'm all for it.
I would agree. I think this is, the reason why we're here tonight is just a little technicality that we gotta fix, but I think it makes sense to approve this. As Councilman Osborne said, the other development that you guys have looks very nice. It's very appealing, and this will be a great addition to this area, too. So, thank you.
All right. No further discussion. Thank you all for coming tonight. I appreciate you being here and your comments and the letter inside. I agree with what's already been stated. What you've been doing in the other areas looks very nice. The landscape, the whole thing, looks really good, so I think I wouldn't have a problem with it as well. So, at this time, clerk, please call the roll.
Barnum?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Pollard?
Yes.
Nave?
Yes. All right. Moving into item E, ordinances first reading. Number one, first ordinance reading for ZMA 03-2024, tax map partial 308-2-1. No one has signed up for public comments. Coming back to you, Jay.
Thank you again, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I'm just gonna kind of jump right in to the conclusion and recommendation of the staff report since we've already gone through the particulars. Staff has reviewed the application and the request in accordance with the Code of Virginia and finds the following. So, Code of Virginia 15.2-2283, as stated earlier in the report, states that the purpose of zoning ordinances, they shall be for the general purpose of promoting the health, safety, or general welfare of the public. This code section gives 12 purposes that shall be followed when a locality creates a zoning ordinance. Code of Virginia 15.2-2284, also stated earlier in the report, informs a locality what shall be considered when applying these 12 purposes. These factors listed in this section have been evaluated by various members of city staff, as well as Bristol, Virginia utilities in their respective field of expertise, and have been documented in the impact section of the report. The majority of the comments indicate that with a few caveats, the property could be rezoned when applying the impacts of 15.2-2284 to the purposes in 15.2-2283. The two main concerns from staff were the impacts on traffic and the desire to know what the applicant's plans are prior to rezoning approval. The city has submitted a smart-scale project, as mentioned earlier, to VDOT that would add turn lanes and slightly reconfigure the intersection of Old Airport Road and Bonham Road. This project would also require the dedication of roadway from the proposed site. If approved, the city believes that this would improve traffic flow to the, near the proposed site. In addition to the project, engineering has stated that approval of the site plan of any use will require a traffic impact analysis. Economic Development did make a comment that rezoning is not recommended until the final use is determined, and has brought up the question of the restrictive covenants. A specific use for a property is not a consideration of staff nor the city council when recommending or approving a rezoning, as it is not a Code of Virginia requirement. The planning commission and city council should consider any use that is permitted by right in the new zoning district as a potential use and act accordingly. The flexible redevelopment district will give the applicant more options for development, thereby meeting the goal of the district by rejuvenating economic activity to relatively large tracts that have been vacant, thereby providing jobs and increased tax base. It is true that the covenants have been placed on the property, will prevent the majority of the uses in the proposed new zone from that use, but that is not a consideration in the rezoning request, since those are controlled by adjoining landowners and the industrial development authority. In an email sent to staff by the applicant on December 12th, he writes that "I wanted to note that the current restrictive covenants do not need to be updated or removed for the current zoning of industrial." Per section two of the Certificate of Amendment amending declaration of restrictive covenants, D Book 266, page 70. "Once we get approval on rezoning to FRD, we will take the necessary steps in our due diligence to work with you, or work with you all, having them either updated or removed based on the use we decide makes the most sense for..." based on the use we decide makes the most sense for this site." So basically, what it comes down to is the staff looks at the land use, looks at the comprehensive plan and the zoning aspect of it. The restrictive deed covenants that are there are not something that we look at when evaluating whether or not this property should be rezoned. The Planning Commission did recommend, by a five-to-zero vote to city council, that the zoning map amendment be approved. So based on the purposes of the flexible redevelopment district and the comprehensive plan future land use map, which shows the properties like commercial, staff recommends that city council approve the zoning map amendment on first ordinance reading.
All right, thank you. All right, we're looking for a council motion and second for the first reading of ordinance full or by caption before we get into discussion.
I'll move for approval of, on first reading, by caption only.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second for first reading of the ordinance by caption only. So getting into the discussion, I just have a couple of questions about this. So do we have any idea of why they're wanting the rezoning? Or are they just trying to have more options for something to go in there?
Yes, the, since the flexible redevelopment has a lot more options available to it from an economic development standpoint, and the, the condition, you could almost say that the conditions that are on that property have hindered development in the past. That's the main reason for the rezoning request. We do have Robert from the property, one of the property owners' representatives here. So if there's anything specific that you'd like a little bit more that I can give you, you know, he is available here, too, so.
All right, thank you. And then also, so once they decide on something, just passing this is not going to automatically approve for what they want to move forward. We will have to then look at what they're wanting to put on the property, and it will go through the IDA and then to us again?
Yes, that's the way the covenants are written. The IDA has to approve it. It does, it will not come back to the city council.
Okay.
But the IDA would have to approve it, and they'd have to get a certain percentage of the property owners in the industrial park to sign off.
That is, if it fell without, if it fell outside the current restrictions.
Correct, only if they needed to amend or remove these covenants.
Okay, so if it's something outside these restrictions, then it would have to come back and for, present to the IDA, who would then have to approve it?
Correct.
Correct.
If it, if it's a business that is described in the restrictive covenants, then it could go in as it is right now. But if it's a business outside of those restrictive covenants, it could not. Even though this is rezoned, the restrictive, restrictive covenants control over the rezoning.
Okay, thank you.
What percentage of adjacent property owners?
It was two-thirds, so 66.6, whatever, you know, percent.
Now, for the sake of protection of those surrounding, the planning department will still have to approve any proposed flats, correct?
Correct. Any site plan will have to be approved, and that'll go through staff review. They'll look at, you know, driveway entrances, parking, stormwater, water quality, erosion, sediment. If it is a commercial use, they will have to provide screening or it adjoins the residential neighborhoods. So all of those things would be reviewed on a staff level once a site plan would come in.
One thing that has been proposed in the past for this property was residential. Is that allowed under the current deed restriction covenants?
It is not.
I do have a question. Thank you for your presentation on this. In Section 50-22, the quote from it is that, "Flexible redevelopment district, the purpose of this district is to encourage the creative redevelopment of certain previously developed properties to allow a mix of compatible land uses," then it goes on.
Right.
So does this fall under, can this be flexible redevelopment? Because it's never been developed, the first time to be redeveloped?
Well, let me find that, and I'll, that's something that we had some discussions over on a staff level, just to let you know as far as that goes. But, let me find that for you. It also discuss, it goes on, and the intent is to rejuvenate economic activity to relatively large tracts that have been vacant. Tracks being vacant, it doesn't specifically call out buildings being vacant. So I think you, we, the way we looked at this is that you could go either way on that with either the buildings that have been vacant or tracks that have been vacant.
As of yet, the developer has not indicated any proposed use, correct?
Correct.
Have, have we asked if there is one coming, or can we ask?
I haven't gotten too far into that with, since it, since it hasn't been rezoned, we haven't, you know, what? Try not to get too far ahead of ourselves when it comes to that. Kind of try to think one at a time, but have not had any serious discussions, no.
Any other questions or comments?
Well, I just have a, I guess, a comment. I guess, going back to the very beginning, I think Mr. Osborne and myself were the ones that were up here. I believe it was in 2019 when this property was sold. And I guess, I still get some questions sometimes about why was this property sold? Why did the city council vote? And from my recollection, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Osborne, but there was a proposal for a large residential complex, nice units. And my thought at the time was when, in 2019, it was, well, there could be a casino coming, and we'd need more housing, and this is a great place for, for housing, which would act as a buffer between the single-family homes there on, on Linwood, and then the, the rest of the industrial park. So, so at the time, I voted yes for that when we sold the property. And that was really the main reason why, because of the need for more residential. So I, I know there was some issues with sewer capacity, and then COVID happened, and my understanding is the developers, you know, costs changed a lot over the past few years. So maybe it, it could still be that, but maybe not anymore, so. I don't know, I guess, obviously, it seems like rezoning this to a flexible makes sense in terms that there could be more, more uses. It could open it up, but at the same time, it, this is a prime property, a big property, and, and I just, obviously, I want to protect the residential owners around it. I know we heard some concerns from those folks as well, so. So I really don't know what the rest of the council is thinking. If we, if we go ahead and vote just up or down, yes or no, or we vote to postpone this to try to see if we can get some more details about what this development could be in the future.
So, Mr. Farm, on what you were talking about, there was a, something that had been submitted, and I think it was 2017, where a developer was thinking about buying the property, was going to put in some multifamily residential, and then found out that there was not enough sewer capacity. And that's when the project just basically died. And I think that's where that agreement with BBU comes into play now, if you did have something that was within a certain number of multifamily units.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
And you said 2017?
I think it was 2017.
I came aboard late 2018, and I remember voting on it. It, it may have been discussions in 2017 and 18, and then...
Yeah, I think it was officially, it never went forward, but, yeah. That might be the first thing, I was looking at the file number, and it, 17, but it could have gone longer, it was before I started this, so.
So if we rezone it, if there will not, you cannot put any type of housing there? So it would not be housing at all?
Not until, not unless they were to update those restrictive covenants to permit residential. Correct. The zoning would allow it, but the covenants would not. Not as they are currently written.
And that'll require IDA approval.
Correct.
Yeah, I agree with what Councilman Farnum was saying about the need for housing, and also, it is a prime piece of property in the city, right next to a great neighborhood. And I know it's kind of that midway point also between industrial and the neighborhood, but we have heard from a lot of those, you know, folks that live in the neighborhood who are concerned about what's going to go on that property. And so that is concerning if we can't, if there can't be any type of residential with this rezoning.
Well, I guess to clarify, let's go back to 2019. The developer bought the property, was in the process of obtaining approvals from adjacent property owners to allow for housing, and then COVID happened. And I think at some point, and correct me if I'm wrong, I think they did have enough adjacent property owners to allow for the change of that, those restrictive covenants. And then, by the time that happened, prices of materials had increased, prices of labor had increased, and it just really didn't make economic sense to build apartments at that time. And that's not saying that they can't be built later, because now flexible redevelopment does allow for that to be done later. You would still, he would still have to go through that process of getting the adjacent property owners to approve the change of the restrictive covenants. And if he did that, then housing could go on that site.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
But really, correct me if I'm wrong, it's as broad as it is long, because whether we do this now and he removes the covenants, or we wait and he removes the covenants and rezones later, it's the same.
The covenants are always going to control right now? So, I mean, you could zone this, you know, whatever you wanted to zone it, agricultural, but the, the restrictive covenants are going to control over the zone.
Okay.
I have a further question on the, the two-thirds of the adjacent property owners. Is that total property owners, or is that by how much property they own? Two-thirds of, you see what I'm saying?
It's two-thirds of the owners of the Bristol Industrial Park, I think is the way that's worded.
Okay.
So that includes the Office Depot site, or what I call the Office Depot site, UPS, electromechanical. I can't think of the other businesses that go down the road behind UPS, but several other businesses through there as well.
And through my discussions with Mac Chapman, it's not the number of property owners, it's a number of, it's the land area. So if somebody owns multiple parcels, you know, you have to get that, that way. Like, if one person owned 50% of the parcels, and you had them sign, then that's a 50% so far. You don't have to get all the different ones, it's the land area.
But in any of these scenarios, it's not, you don't have to get the sign on of the adjacent residential property owners?
The restrictive covenant does not call for that, that I recall.
No, I believe it's just industri, it's just the Bristol Industrial Park.
So I guess one way to put it, if the developer wanted to bring in a manufacturing facility right now that created noise and truck traffic, there is nothing that would, that the adjacent homeowners could do to prevent that, because that is something that is allowed within the restrictive covenants.
But if we were to rezone it to FRD, then at any point, they could bring in 300 storage units, or a print shop, or utilities facility, or, or anything else, right? Without, without the residential owners having any say?
No, it still has to fall within the restrictive covenants. So I'm pulling up the restrictive covenants.
If some of those uses that are, there are some uses in the FRD that would be allowed under those covenants, you know, light industrial, there's a few things like that, those could go ahead and come in. But we have to look at them and say, okay, is this within the covenant? Storage facilities are commercial use, not an industrial use. So those are not something that's permitted, so.
So even though they're permitted under the FRD, they would still require the removal of the covenants?
Correct.
Regardless of what it's on?
Correct.
Okay.
And that can get as detailed as they choose to, as the neighboring property owners choose to do, correct?
Yes. If you, you may or may not remember from the, say, like, the staff reports from the previous rezoning, they had those covenants updated to include one more use. You know, it was like a pickleball court, something like that. Instead of having them all taken off, they just added one more use. So that's something you might see a property owner doing in the future if it were rezoned, if they wanted to put something in. But again, that has to be approved by the IDA, and the owners have to sign off on that.
So right now, if he wanted to do the world's largest car wash, or the world's largest Dollar General, that'd have to be voted on, again, by the IDA and the neighboring?
That's correct, yes.
Here is, so the covenants state, "No facility, building, structure, sign, or improvement shall be erected, made, or used except for one or more of the following purposes. A, establishments for the manufacturing, processing, assembly, and distribution of products in the office buildings or corporate headquarters related thereto; B, establishments for scientific research and development; C, establishments primarily for the wholesale distribution of goods, products, and materials; D, heliports and public utility facilities for the use of occupants, occupants of the industrial park; E, industrial facilities; and F, public uses necessary to service the property." So if he came in tomorrow and said, "I want to put in a heliport," that would fall within the restrictive covenants, and a heliport could be put on that property. Goes on to state, "In addition, but without limiting the generality of the foregoing prohibition, no facility, building, structure, or improvement shall be erected, made, or used for any dwelling house, mobile home, motel, hotel, rooming house, tourist home, or any place of human habitation, either permanent or temporary, except quarters for caretakers or watchmen serving permitted users; any facility for the retail sale of goods or services except in combination with other uses permitted; uses considered unsafe or dangerous, such as the manufacture or storage of explosives; uses considered objectionable or obnoxious by reason of odor, dust, fumes, smoke, noise, vibration, refuse matter, or water-carrying waste; uses considered objectionable by reason of adverse effect on adjoining lots, such as wrecking, junk, or salvage yards; any plant or facility for the manufacture or making of asphalt, mortar, plaster, concrete, or the like; any mine, quarry, or drill site." So that's what cannot be there.
So any industrial facility, any industrial use that doesn't fall under that umbrella would still be permitted?
Which is one of the options under flexible redevelopment use, anyway.
Correct, a light manufacturing type use.
Well, I guess I'm trying to wrap my head around, if they're not sure even what they want to do on this property yet, why go through this process to rezone it? And then, not sure what they're wanting to put on the property. I think that's where I'm at with it.
I guess I do like the way Mr. Eads, you explained it how, where it's currently M2C. There could be manufacturing that goes there right now, today, that has trucks and makes noise, so in a way, is rezoning it to the flexible redevelopment district, which includes light manufacturing with no heavy machining or outside noise or odors? In a way, is, is that, it's opening it up for more uses, but is it, in a way, protecting the neighbors because it's taking it away from the current M2C zoning?
I feel like I'm reading it that regardless of how it's zoned, the covenants will override whatever the zoning is, right?
Yeah.
Is that, would that be a fair generalization?
Yes, and covenants do... Yes, and covenants do override the zoning. That is pursuant to several cases. Give me just a second.
It's also in 50 hyphen nine of our code.
Okay.
Private restrictions.
Whichever would be more restrictive, correct?
Right, it, it, the code specifically reads, "This article, meaning the zoning ordinance, is not intended to override any easement covenant or any other private agreements, provided that where the regulations of this article are more restrictive, or impose higher standards or requirements than such easements, covenants, or other private agreements, the requirements of this article shall cover." So whichever is the more restrictive.
Which means that if we were to approve the rezoning to FRD, they would not be allowed to have, say, industrial warehousing, which would currently be allowed. You could have self-storage, but not large warehousing.
No, I think it's the other way around. You could have, self-storage is a commercial use, not an industrial use, according to our city code. But, let me find them. You could have wholesale distribution of goods, products, and materials. You could have that. So, kind of like warehousing, I mean, you know, if you were to store them and then distribute them out.
Which would be allowed now.
Correct.
But if we were to approve this change, they would no longer be allowed to do that.
If the covenants were changed.
They could have self-storage, but not anything that would have large truck traffic, such as a large warehouse.
Only if those covenants were changed, yes.
Is it appropriate to ask the gentleman that works for, Mr. Moore, if there's been any other discussions about what this could be? Because I remember KD came in here when we were discussing rezoning the property to the north, the old Boise Cascade property, and he said he wanted to rezone his as well. Just, just out of curiosity, if there's any? Okay. You can see from our point of view, we just want to make sure we protect, we've heard from property owners adjoining, we just want to make sure we protect those owners of, in the residential area right next door.
I know we've, we've hammered this multiple ways, but I, I just want to have clarity for myself, so I apologize if this is the 14th question on this. So currently under the FR, excuse me, currently under the M2 zoning plus the covenants, they are allowed to build establishments for the manufacture, processing, assembly, and distribution of products, and the office buildings, corporate headquarters related thereto, skip down to, and industrial facilities. That's currently allowed. If we were to rezone this to an FRD, would, under the FRD zone characteristics and description, item number 17, light manufacturing, to me, that seems to be more restrictive than what was originally under the M2 with the covenants? Which, if we voted to do FRD, which would be law of the land, for my clarification?
Which would be what?
Well, I think you could, so FRD allows light manufacturing. And the restrictive covenants, it does not say anything about light manufacturing. What is more restrictive? You know, that would have to, I mean, to give you an answer right now, I don't think I could give you an answer as, without doing some research, as to which one of those two is more restrictive than the other. So I'd be afraid to say.
And, and when, when my office is contacted about any business, as to what it's zoned, and, you know, what's the property zone, and what could I put on this land? You know, we, one of the things we do, of course, we look through the code specifically, is that use listed, yes. If it's not something that's listed specifically, we, you know, we move on, we maybe do a little research, and we try to find it and pair it up with something that's similar in that list of uses. If it's blight, you know, if it's, sometimes it's very easy to say, okay, yeah, this is similar, it's a newer type of business, the code hasn't accounted for it yet, you know, that comes up a lot. The planning commission can also do a similar use determination, you know, somebody can come in and say, "We believe this is similar to here, can you just tell us yes?" But it really comes down to planning and zoning as to whether or not we believe that's a light manufacturing use, or we believe that is a industrial use. And if the property, if the person does not agree, they can appeal that decision, of course, and it can go to the Board of Zoning Appeals. But these are usually made on a case-by-case basis sometimes. I mean, like I said, some of them are very easy to determine, some of them are a little bit more on the gray, you know, so.
I hate to do this, but is there a way we can postpone this, so we can maybe figure out a few more answers to questions that keep popping up?
Sure. If Mr. Farnum will draw his motion.
I'll do that, because it is a complicated subject because of the zoning currently, the new zoning, plus the covenants and restrictions, plus how the neighbors have to agree in the industrial park. It's, it's not like a normal rezoning. So, if that's okay with everyone, I'll withdraw that motion for first reading.
Okay.
And if it's okay, I'd make a new motion. Do we need a new motion that we postpone this?
Postpone it.
Until a later time?
I'm unsure about some council member's schedules, so I don't want to say January 28th. But if you want to do the first meeting in February, that may be the best, just to make sure everybody's available.
Okay. Yeah, I'll, so my motion will be to postpone this topic until the first meeting in February.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to postpone it until the first meeting in February and a second. Clerk, please call the roll.
Farnum?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Pollard?
Yes.
Knave?
Yes. All right, moving into item F, ordinance's second reading. The second ordinance reading to classify tax map numbers 17 hyphen 13 hyphen 4 hyphen F, 17 hyphen 15 hyphen 4 hyphen 15, 17 hyphen 15 hyphen 4 hyphen 16, 17 hyphen 15 hyphen 4 hyphen 17, 17 hyphen 15 hyphen 4 hyphen 18, 17 hyphen 15 hyphen 7 hyphen 12, 17 hyphen 15 hyphen 7 hyphen 13, 17 hyphen 16 hyphen 13 hyphen 5, 17 hyphen 17 hyphen 6 hyphen 6, 28 hyphen 1 hyphen 29 hyphen 8, 28 hyphen 2 hyphen 2 hyphen 9, 28 hyphen 2 hyphen 6 hyphen 10, 28 hyphen 2 hyphen 6 hyphen 11, 28 hyphen 3 hyphen 2 hyphen 2A. I have to take a breath after that. As blighted properties and increase the real estate tax rate by 5% on the same pursuant to Virginia Code 58, 1 hyphen 2, 32, 21, point 6.
Uh, council, oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, no, go right ahead.
Uh, council, before you tonight, is the second reading of the ordinance to increase the property tax rate on what is otherwise known as the former VI property. These tax rates would only apply to the parcels where buildings are located. We've previously had our real estate assessor review the property, has given us a letter stating those properties are blighted and derelict. And pursuant to Code Section 58.1 hyphen 32, 21.6, the city has the authority to increase that real estate tax rate by 5%, and I'm asking council to approve that with the second reading of the ordinance tonight.
All right, thank you. Looking for a council motion and second for the second reading, full or by caption?
I move for second reading of the ordinance by caption only.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any council discussion?
And council, before you start, we noticed tonight we have two ordinance 24/16s, so this will be ordinance 24 hyphen 17.
Okay, 24 hyphen 17. All right, thank you. I'll just say, this is another step forward. We've done this on, before, so I'm hoping by continuing to raise the taxes on this property, hoping to get the attention of the owners for continually to ignore our comments and our outreach to them.
I would just agree in second that, for too long, this has been an issue for the city, for our citizens. We all, we all know the fire happened recently, and we, we didn't bring up earlier, but our, our firefighters worked incredibly hard to fight that, police worked hard as well. So just the work that's, our city staff have had to do to kind of deal with this property over the years, especially recently, is quite ridiculous. And so it's, it's time to make some movement, and this is just another step towards that.
If we could raise it by 100%, I'd do it right now. But no, I think that, you know, this is a good way to, you know, a good way to hopefully be able to recoup some of the, some of the costs that we're incurring now in the wake of the fire. And hopefully, as the mayor and vice mayor have indicated, this will get the attention of the owner, and hopefully he'll do the honorable thing and sell the property, or give the property away, give it up. Because that's, that's the, that's the honorable thing, that's the moral thing, that's the correct thing to do, so hopefully he will take notice.
At this point, the utilities have been confirmed as disconnected, correct?
Yes.
At what point would it be reasonable then for us to take the follow-up action to increase the rate again?
Well, you can't increase it again. The code only allows for the 5%. It doesn't say that we can increase it again after another period of time. It just says it allows you to increase it 5%.
Did I, I thought that you said that at one time, that there was a second section that allowed increasing the rate?
Oh, you're talking, okay, I know what code section you're talking about now. There is a different code section that allows, I'd have to go back and look at that, I don't remember the timing exactly, but it, it could allow us to increase it another 5%.
At the time we were discussing it before, as I understand it, the utilities, at least some utilities were still enabled on that property.
Right.
And we may now be able to potentially follow up by increasing it again.
Right, and I'll follow up with BBU to see when those utilities were cut, for sure.
Thank you.
All right, clerk, please call the roll.
Farnum?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Pollard?
Yes.
Knave?
Yes. All right, reading of ordinance by caption only.
Ordinance 24 hyphen 17, and ordinance to classify tax map numbers 17 hyphen 13 hyphen 4 hyphen F, 17 hyphen 15 hyphen 4 hyphen 15, 17 hyphen 15 hyphen 4 hyphen 16, 17 hyphen 15 hyphen 4 hyphen 17, 17 hyphen 15 hyphen 4 hyphen 18, 17 hyphen 15 hyphen 7 hyphen 12, 17 hyphen 15 hyphen 7 hyphen 13, 17 hyphen 16 hyphen 13 hyphen 5, 17 hyphen 17 hyphen 6 hyphen 6, 28 hyphen 1 hyphen 29 hyphen 8, 28 hyphen 2 hyphen 6 hyphen 9, 28 hyphen 2 hyphen 6 hyphen 10, 28 hyphen 2 hyphen 6 hyphen 11, 28 hyphen 3 hyphen 2 hyphen 2, as blighted property and increase the real estate tax rate by 5% on the same pursuant to Virginia Code Section 58.1 hyphen 32, 21.6.
I missed one of those, could you read that again?
All right, looking for a council motion and second for adoption.
I move for adoption of the ordinance as presented.
All right, we have a motion and a second for adoption. Clerk, please call the roll.
Farnum?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Pollard?
Yes.
Knave?
Yes. All right, item G, matters to be presented by members of the public, non-agenda items. We have one person signed up, and that is Mr. Tim Slagle. And I'll ask you to come forward, you have three minutes, and you'll state your name and address, and you'll get a green light, a warning light, and then a red light. Thank you.
My name's Tim Slagle, I live at 215 Old Airport Road here in Bristol, Virginia. I'm here to address council after reading statement made publicly, and I saw it on social media, by Mr. Pollard, in reference to, I think the way it was written, violating the city council's code of ethics and making statements that he knew to be untrue at the time that he made the statements. I'm really surprised that council hasn't already moved forward to start process to remove Mr. Pollard from council. Mr. Pollard, I find your actions to be childish, irresponsible, and reckless. Not any of this council's fault, but y'all guys have had uphill battle for years because of previous councils. I think, Mr. Pollard, you should do the honorable thing and resign from council. If not, I think you should be removed. I don't think you should let one bad apple spoil the barrel. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, moving into item H, consent agenda.
I move for approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Clerk, please call the roll.
Farnum?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Pollard?
Yes.
Knave?
Yes. All right, next item on the agenda, item I, closed session. Pursuant to Section 2.2 dash 3711 point A1, Code of Virginia 1950 as amended, discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of a specific public office, appointees, or employees of any public body, personnel. I'm looking for a council motion and second.
I move we enter into closed session for the reasons stated.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to move into closed session. Clerk, please call the roll.
Farnum?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Pollard?
Yes.
Knave?
Yes.
By roll call vote, council members certify that only business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements as specified in the motion to convene an executive session were discussed. Clerk, please call the roll.
Farnham.
Yes.
Holmes.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Pollard.
Yes.
Naismith. Yes. And next item on the agenda is adjournment. Looking for a motion in a second?
So move.
Second.
All right. We've got a motion in a second to adjourn. Clerk, please call the roll.
Farnham.
Yes.
Holmes.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Pollard.
Yes.
Naismith.